Victoria Young, I am the Chair of the Vancouver School Board and I'd like to call this meeting to order. With deep gratitude and respect, we are honoured to be learning and unlearning on the ancestral and unceded lands of the Haumaquiam, Skoma Shokomeo and Slaywatath. And I would invite everyone to continue to fall in love with these lands as we work, play, and raise families on. Before we begin hearing submissions about our budget, I would like to share a moment of gratitude. Earlier today, I had the pleasure of joining the Minister of Education and Childcare, Lisa Baer, and the Minister of Infrastructure, Bowen Ma, and Emily Mabel Elmore to celebrate the new playground at Cunningham Elementary. It was a joyful occasion and it supported a new playground support the health and wellbeing of students with safe outdoors play spaces. The joy of play and connection was unmistakable for everyone there and it was also great to see a bunch of adults on the play equipment with a bunch of five-year-olds. This celebration was timely as this week marks Education Week in B.C., during which we recognise the dedication of teachers, support staff, school administrators, and trustees who make our education system here in B.C. one of the best in the world. To our stakeholder representatives and to your members, on behalf of the board, I wish you a happy Education Week. Together, we share a commitment to ensure students succeed and thrive. Like you, we as a board will continue to keep this shared goal at the forefront of the work that we do. This meeting is being broadcast live and audio and video recordings will be available after the meeting ends. We have a strong commitment to ethical conduct and I would ask that it is a collective responsibility and I ask that everyone acts in a respectful manner in which we would want our students in our schools to act. Okay, I'll start with introductions. Staff and trustees are here in person at the boardroom, in the boardroom at the Education Centre, and I welcome Superintendent Helen McGregor, Secretary-Treasurer Flavia Coghlan, and my fellow trustees. I'll start with Trustee Friedko if you would all please introduce yourselves.
Trustee Friedko, present.
Trustee Suzie Ma.
Trustee Christopher Richardson.
Trustee Reddy, pronouns here.
Lois Chan Valley, trustee.
Janet Fraser, trustee.
Okay, and we have regrets from Trustee Chen and Trustee Zhang and from our student trustee Athena Yu. I welcome stakeholder reps who are here with us today. I ask that you introduce yourselves, starting from the first table. We will start with Cathy, please.
Cathy Currie, Staff Representative, KPI Local 15.
Warren Williams, President, KPI Local 15.
Benita Kwan, VASSA.
Angie Haveman, VASSA.
Vanessa LeFay, Vancouver Elementary and Adult Educators Society.
Gedan, Marjorie Dumont, Vancouver Elementary and Adult Educators Society.
Hayden O'Connor, PASSA.
Herman Shadley, Vancouver Secondary.
Carl Jansey, Vancouver Secondary Teachers Association.
Dana Wida, VEPFA.
Stephen Lee Young, VEPFA.
Melanie, I'm not sure that was on. Was that? Could you try again, please?
Melanie Chang, Vancouver D-PAC.
Sherry Brashiers, Vancouver D-PAC.
Mackenzie Chung, Vancouver District Student Council.
Arabella Mu, Vancouver District Student Council.
Thank you, and thank you all for being here. We'll now move to dissolve the special board meeting into the Committee of the Whole, which will give the board the opportunity to hear presentations on the draft 2025-2026 financial Moved by Trustee Ma that the board dissolve itself into Committee of the Whole. Thank you, Trustee Ma, is there a seconder? Trustee Richardson, thank you, all in favour? Okay, unanimous, thank you very much. Okay, before we hear from the first presenter, I'll review a few of our procedures. Time allotted is five minutes. Every effort should be made to keep it as close to that as possible, please. Presenters are expected to comply with board norms, as I mentioned before, around decorum and conduct. Delegates must please avoid any personal information, just a friendly reminder about that, just to respect individuals' privacy. And no board business other than the receipt of presentations will be conducted tonight, so there'll be no question and answer period. Board members may direct questions for clarification though through the spokesperson, but no debates tonight. All attendees are expected to behave responsibly and professionally, please and thank you. And of course disruptions, personal attacks, or unkind language are prohibited, and we ask that you don't make audio and video recordings of the meeting as this is being videoed. Okay, we will also have a timer on the screen for you. I think everyone is aware, it makes a little ding when time is up, and you can visually see it there, which will help. So I would like to then start with the presentations. First, we have Arabella Mu and Mackenzie Chung representing the students in the district from the Vancouver District Student Council, and I would like to begin there. If you would like to begin, as soon as you start chatting or start talking, we will start your time. Could you just speak into your microphone when you're speaking so everyone watching can also hear?
Yeah, so we do have a couple of slides just to accompany us, but yeah, good evening, everybody. Like was said, our names are Mackenzie Chung and Arabella Mu, and we are glad to be here as representatives of the Vancouver District Student Council, serving as this year's co-presidents.
As a stakeholder group that aims to amplify student perspectives in the school board's decision-making process, we are going to present our annual budget report with information as to what students' needs and wants are for the upcoming school year. This information was gathered at a general meeting on March 4th where we garnered input from 32 representatives at 17 out of 18 secondary schools and alternate programs. Each representative was allocated three votes to indicate their top three budget priorities. The results are as follows.
So our top priority facilities was also one of the concerns that was raised. Oh, oh yeah, we can go to the next slide. Yep, so our top priority was one of the concerns that VDSC raised last year. Students feel that access to working and clean facilities that are stocked with supplies is a necessity, and despite the work that the VSB has done and continues to do, this still seems to be an ongoing issue. Students have noted concerns with bathrooms being closed or broken for extended periods of time, lacking supplies such as menstrual products, and having damaged sinks or locks with these not being fixed. This is important because students cannot be expected to learn and thrive if their basic hygiene is being compromised, and functional facilities directly impact students' learning and wellbeing.
Our second priority is council support, another one of the top priorities from last year. Students have noted long lines to see their assigned councillor and this results in them not receiving the level of support that they need, whether this be academic-related support or mental health-related support. Our representatives have expressed that schools should be instructed to have a greater amount of councillors available to meet the high demand. Additionally, students feel that having councillors dedicated to supporting mental health could be beneficial. When students are unable to access timely support can lead to long-term consequences on both their academic success and mental wellbeing.
So our third priority for this year, if we want to go to the next slide, is increased and equitable access to academic acceleration courses such as Advanced Placement or AP courses. Our representatives have raised concern about the limited availability of AP courses at schools, unequal offerings of these courses at different school sites, and the effectiveness of current offerings in preparing students for exams like these. They've also noticed the financial burden of taking AP exams at external test sites can pose a significant challenge for some students. Obviously, opportunities like AB courses give students the chance to challenge themselves and earn university credit, so we feel that it is crucial that they are available equitably across the district.
In addition to what has been said, other student priorities include increasing the availability of computing devices in schools and having a wider range of healthy food options available in cafeterias and vending machines.
One distinction we'd like to make is the Vancouver District Student Council understands that schools have individualised problems and needs and that the issues presented above may not be solvable by a blanket solution. However, the vote, as well as many of the discussions that we have had at previous general meetings, do have evidence that many student concerns are consistent across the district. Throughout this year, we have also been connecting with district staff to communicate individualised, school-based issues on the priorities presented.
Our council understands that funding is tight, money is finite, and needs cannot always be met. However, upon allocating resources, we hope that student perspectives can be weighed heavily in an education system that is designed to prepare, teach, and serve us. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate hearing student voice because it, I just, I really appreciate hearing all the work that goes into what you bring to the board as well, so thank you for coming tonight. Trustees, are there any questions for our VDSC reps? Okay, Trustee Fraser and then Trustee Ma.
So I'm just curious a little bit about the process, and I think maybe I missed a little bit at the beginning where you're explaining the process, you said the March 4th general meeting, maybe you could go over that again?
Yeah, absolutely. So the Vancouver District Student Council, we have at least two representatives from every secondary school in the district as well as alternate programs, and so each representative is given three votes, and they were able to vote for their top three budget priorities. And then today, we were able to present the top three along with additional two.
Were they selecting from a predetermined list of priorities or could they write in any priority for their voting?
Yeah, that's a good question. The table was, the floor was opened up to everyone, so they had any additional priorities that they would want to add prior to voting, they're able to do so.
Trustee Ma?
Thank you very much for coming to present tonight. So I have a couple of questions. The first question is about the AP, and you talk about equitable access. Can you give us an example of that?
Yeah, I think what we can speak from, from personal experiences is just like within our own school, there's a lot more access to these courses, and we understand that there is like a teacher aspect in it, like having teachers that are able to teach the courses, but I think what's been said from our members is that they do feel that like they should not be restricted from being able to access these courses in person based on the school that they go to, since some schools have none and some schools have like eight.
So my second question is, you mentioned healthier food, so what sort of examples did some of the students talk about when they talked about wanting more healthier food in cafeterias?
I think one of the things that was brought up is that students felt especially when they had like a dietary restriction, whether this be like an allergy or intolerance, that especially in those cases, the amount of healthy foods for them were very limited. So I think really it was just about increasing the amount of kinds that are offered, so if they do happen to have a restriction, that they still have plenty of options.
Trustee Reddy and then Trustee Richardson.
Thank you, and thank you so much for your presentation and all your work putting this information together. It's very helpful in the budget discussion, so I have two questions about the washroom item that you mentioned, so this is not the first time I've heard about the washroom upgrades, and I was wondering if you could share a bit about how like the updates to the work are being shared, and if you have a sense of what the priorities are coming up, and that would help me as a trustee kind of look for opportunities to do more in the next budget.
Yeah, thank you. So we are aware of the Washroom Refresh Initiative that was done earlier this summer, and this was of course shared with our representatives to share with the rest of their student bodies. I think in terms of our priorities are sort of broken down into two main categories, the first being, like was mentioned, the access to especially like menstrual products. We think that one, even if they are there, they're not communicated because we were told that, you know, sometimes there's one central bathroom where their, where menstrual products are being able to be accessed, but students aren't aware of where these areas are, so they feel like that's missing from the school. And then, so that's one piece, and then the second piece is when we're talking about like facilities being broken and then not communicated about when or why they're being broken, and then the length of period for these facilities not being upgraded leads students to not having access to them in the first place.
Trustee Richardson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Arabella and Mackenzie, thank you so much for your presentation, and I appreciate that your balanced approach in terms of you acknowledged that this is frankly a tough budget year. And this, and I acknowledge that some of these requests have been made previously. I'll be searching through the budget document to see which of these items are addressed or aren't addressed, and maybe that's something that staff can help us with as trustees to kind of point out where in fact the budget has been adjusted to respond to the requests or not, and to better enable us to respond to your requests. I thank you.
Great, seeing no other questions, thank you very much to you both. I know you probably have a busy schedule, so if at any point throughout this meeting you need to sneak out, feel free to. Students with lots on your plate. Okay, moving to next, we have, okay, Canadian Union of Public Employees, Local 15, I'm not sure if it'll be Warren or Cathy, but you can start anytime.
Thank you, through the Chair, it'll be myself, Warren Williams, President of the Local. I want to first hand say thank you to the Student Council for their presentation, and to reiterate for the trustees that our presentation is student-focused. We understand that there aren't going to be layoffs this round of budget for the next school year, but we do have concerns about the reallocation and how that's being rolled out. We do have some concerns with this year's format of the budget presentation as it made it somewhat difficult to understand. We also feel that the deadline of April 17th, 2025 for submissions to be on the agenda did not give all stakeholders enough time.
Sorry, Warren, could you just hold on one sec? Is there any way to turn up, hit the volume on his microphone, please?
Do I just need to bring, is that better?
Yeah, that's much better.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I'll start over from, we do have some concerns with this year's format of the budget presentation as it made it somewhat difficult to understand. We also feel that the deadline of April 17th, 2025 for submissions to be on the agenda did not give all stakeholders enough time due to the Easter long weekend and required a quick turnaround for this evening's presentation. Having reviewed the potential reallocations of KPI Local 15 support staff, we have several concerns. Safe and caring schools, reallocation, we believe the VSB staff should remain and continue the work in this vital program for student support alongside the Vancouver Police Department's SOO school liaison officers. In alignment with the education plan, the commitment to safe and caring schools, social, emotional learning, mental health, and the Equity and Anti-Oppression Team is paramount. VSB places a strong emphasis on supporting students through an equity lens, recognising the unique needs and experiences of each student. Some items that differ between school, safe and caring school staff and the SOO, and how we complement one another in addition to why students feel safer approaching VSB staff with their safety concerns before approaching councillors and SOOs. One, no need for parental permission to speak to us. There's historical trauma for some of our students, or many of our students', gender identity, sexual orientation, multicultural barriers, historical trauma, vulnerable topics where students don't feel comfortable discussing with SOOs or councillors. Police have a different protocol for reporting out. Councillors are overwhelmed and do not have the capacity to support students on a regular basis, as our council members have already said, and therefore students depend on safe and caring school staff to do regular mental check-ins. We have community connections, resources beyond the reach of the SOO and councillors, run lunch programmes for vulnerable lonely students disconnected, and we connect students to peers. We're also concerned about the recommendation and potential closure of the Communication Reallocation CORE programme at Baby Elementary and reallocation of staff. CORE provides much-needed support for students struggling with autism. Removing the support under the guise of inclusive education and placing these students in mainstream classrooms at their home schools has the potential to be a grave disservice to each and every student in the classroom. CORE provides a safe and stable environment where these students can thrive and be successful and be prepared for integration, as is the goal of inclusive education. Another concern we have is Strong Start. While there are currently 19 Strong Start programmes stat by 16 Strong Start facilitators, the proposed elimination of three FTE would mean the layoff of approximately 4.5 facilitators representing a 20.12% reduction. This is a significant cut. It is important to clarify that although the Strong Start grant itself has remained unchanged, the funding reductions for 2025-2026 are currently coming from early years' grant. This includes funding streams such as Seamless Day Kindergarten, Changing Possibilities for Young Children, and the Early Childhood Educator Dual Programme Grant. These grants do not directly fund the Strong Start programme. The Strong Start staff are included in the budget cutting, not sure about the Seamless Day and SSA and ECE staffing. Furthermore, as outlined in the VSB budget, the staff cuts are being made to offset a 5.2 million increase in spending to support additional SSA staffing. I would like to highlight that Strong Start facilitators are also classified as SSA/EE. This raises the question, how is it justifiable to lay off three full-time SSA/EE positions equivalent to 4.5 current facilitators in order to increase staffing of other SSA positions with K-7 settings? From the VSB financial planning procedure, the key takeaways are as follows. Prioritising direct support, increasing direct support to students and focusing on frontline workers as emphasised. This includes mechanisms like staffing reviews at both district and school levels, addressing retention and recruitment, community and Indigenous engagement, continuing to strengthen engagement with community partners and including Indigenous communities in the financial planning process is important. This also involves creating partnerships to enhance career pathways for students. Transparency and trust, I'm moving ahead because I can see my time is almost up. The proposed restructuring of programmes does not appear to align with the key takeaways from the budget, that retaining and recruiting frontline support staff is a priority for the VSB. How do these decisions reflect the stated commitment to support and of retaining frontline staff? It is also important to emphasise the scale and impact of the Strong Start programme. These centres currently serve thousands of children aged zero to five within our school communities. In 2024-2025, school year alone, more than 2,000 new children enrolled in the programme. Restructuring such a vital early learning service without clear communication and meaningful community engagement raises serious concerns. I ask you as trustees to see the real merit of these programmes to students under your trust and do not dismantle these essential programmes for student success. Thank you.
Thank you, Warren. Okay, I don't see any questions. Okay, Trustee Reddy?
Thank you, and thanks so much, Warren and Cathy, for your presentation and for taking the time to give us the written submission as well. I have a question around the Safe and Caring Schools programme that you mentioned, and specifically, just thinking back to when that programme came into place, I know we had discussed about follow-up in terms of monitoring and evaluating the programme and having a report, just wondering if that has been shared with you to date, and if that's something you're expecting.
Thank you for the question. No, that has not been presented to us to date, but I would appreciate it.
Any other questions from trustees? I don't see any, did you have something on the tip of your tongue there you wanted to share?
Well, we are waiting for some more information from senior staff regarding the reallocations and what that's going to look like.
Thank you. Okay, and thank you for the distributed information you sent earlier, so we have that as well. Moving along to D-PAC, we have Melanie Chang and Sherry Brashiers. I'd like to ask that you begin your presentation. Thank you.
I would like to start just by thanking you for this opportunity. We're so grateful. If you could start the presentation now.
Welcome to Vancouver District Parent Advisory Council's presentation. We share insights from families across the district and our analysis of budget trends for the last eight years. We highlight key requests to ensure the future budget better supports all students, especially those with the greatest needs. Our first request is to invest in inclusive education. This includes increasing the budget for students with disabilities and diverse needs, allocating more funds to education assistance, reversing underspending, and providing transparency and accountability on how supports are allocated. Learners with disabilities face significant challenges, including coping alone, falling behind in learning, stress, anxiety, loss of confidence, low self-esteem, and structural exclusion. Families are left to carry the burden of waning support, facing academic, emotional, and financial challenges. Many caregivers express the financial burden of paying for private tutoring to support their child's learning. Our analysis shows a decline in spending per student and an underspend of $2.8 million in the amended budget for 2023-24. This highlights the need for better allocation of funds. We also learned that spending on inclusive education in our district is lower compared to neighbouring districts. This comparison underscores the need for increased investment in our students. Our second request is to close the Indigenous graduation gap by strengthening culturally relevant and community-led supports and increasing targeted interventions to move beyond the 62% plateau in completion rates. Completion rates for Indigenous students have remained significantly lower than their non-Indigenous peers for years. This data emphasises the need to close the graduation gap. Our third request is to address teachers' needs for improved working conditions and wellbeing, acting on feedback from frontline staff and recognising that building workforce housing on school sites will not solve staffing problems. The budget for substitute teacher salaries has risen substantially since 2021, indicating a growing reliance on substitutes. This trend is unsustainable and highlights the need to improve working conditions for staff. A recent survey reveals that nearly one-third of VSB teachers are considering leaving within five years. Many feel undervalued and overwhelmed, and rising substitute teacher use signals deeper staffing instability. Supporting teachers is key to student success. Our fourth request is to reduce administration costs by auditing the 197% increase in district governance spending, reallocating funds from admin growth to classrooms, and ensuring all public dollars are used where they have the greatest impact. After adjusting for inflation, the data shows a significant increase in administration budgets while teacher salary budgets decline. This disparity calls for continued re-evaluation of fund allocations to prioritise direct student supports. A detailed breakdown of admin spending reveals substantial increases across various categories. This information supports our call for auditing and reallocating funds to better serve students. Our fifth request is to stop waste in facilities planning by making common sense planning decisions based on transparent data and audit the increased salaries taken from operating funds. In April 2022, the VSB projected a steady enrolment decline of 250 students per year, a forecast that didn't materialise. Instead, enrolment grew by more than 3,400 students since 2022. Due to inaccurate forecasting, funding and staffing didn't keep pace. Schools scrambled to find staff, while classrooms were underfunded. Despite student growth, the VSB still proceeded with wasteful plans to dispose of land at various school sites based on a projected decline. These short-sighted decisions carry long-term costs for the district. This chart shows how the VSB's operations and maintenance spending has changed over time, adjusted for inflation. The VSB attributes its increased costs on school field maintenance and old buildings, but these numbers show a different story. The biggest increase was administrative salaries, rising by nearly 30%. The spending on maintenance, grounds, and utilities stayed flat or even dropped. Parents are being asked to fundraise, while basic health and safety needs go unmet. It's time to ask, does the budget truly reflect the needs of our schools and students? In conclusion, these budget patterns are not sustainable. We must prioritise student needs, retain and respect teachers, examine administration growth, and make better facilities decisions. Families are watching and ready to work- Families are watching and ready to work with the district. Together, we can make changes for a better future for our children.
Wonderful. Is that the end? Thank you. Great, thank you very much. I'm not sure how long, if that was perfectly your allotted time. I think so, so I'll go to my colleagues here at the board table to ask if there are any questions. Trustee Fraser.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation this evening and for providing the information to trustees. You had information about spending on inclusive education. I'm wondering which parts of the budget were included in making those totals?
Can you be more specific about your question? So which parts of the financial plan that came out last week?
Or you have a graph that shows spending per student? So I'm curious about what factors of the spending within the district were calculated as spending per student.
So the inclusive education budget is what people in the Inclusive Ed Working Group have been looking at. It's usually presented in the, what's called the bylaw budget format, which is, which we haven't seen yet in the financial plan. So we haven't been able to compare last year's and the amended budget with the current financial plan. But the way the inclusive ed budget is calculated is by taking the supplemental funding for level one, two, and three students. Those are students with funded designations, what are called funded designations, though actually all designations are funded. But these are the ones that come through in the supplemental grants. Those are added to the basic allocation for those same students. And that's what creates the inclusive education budget, and that's the pattern that's been in place for several years. Over time, where you see that red line going down in that image is the proportion of the funding that comes from the government that goes towards inclusive education. In the past, the VSB, as well as all districts, supplement that amount. And that's because the inclusive ed budget doesn't just serve level one, two, and three students. It also serves, so that's about three thousand students. It also serves another, approximately three thousand students who are, you know, have high incidence designations like learning disabilities, giftedness, and other designations. So those students don't, they don't have supplemental grants attached to them because their funding is included in the basic allocation from the ministry. So the special, the what's now called inclusive ed budget has to also accommodate those students as well. Currently, last year and this year, that budget has only equaled the exact amounts of the inclusive, of the level one, two, and three funding, plus the basic allocations. So those are for the students that bring in the grants. Last year, the funding that was spent on inclusive ed fell below the amount of the grants that comes in, the grants plus the basic allocation. So it fell below the budget. So there was a two point eight million dollar surplus in the inclusive ed budget. That money did not go to the students who needed it. That was probably because of an underestimate in the enrollment. And our concern is that we're seeing the same thing happening this year, that the enrollments have been underestimated. And what we're expecting to see in September is a lack of supports for students who need those supports early in the year. I hope that helps to make, I hope that makes sense. You really need a visual to make it make sense.
Thank you. Trustee ready? Did I see your hand up? Perfect, go ahead.
Thank you, and thank you so much for your presentation and for all your work in producing the presentation and engaging so many parents in your work at large. I do have a question, and I just want to acknowledge you submitted another document about the operating fund in general. And I'm just wondering if you could share about the specific concerns you have about the operating fund?
In terms of inclusive ed or in terms of admin costs, those are, our two focuses have been inclusive education and the admin costs. In inclusive ed, in terms of the operating fund, maybe one of the things that we're concerned about is that the inclusive education budget includes funding for principals and vice principals. So this, I think the amended budget shows that it was two point seven three million dollars. In our research, we haven't seen any district that funds principals and vice principals in the inclusive ed budget. Or some do, but not to the same extent. So we'd like to see that money redirected to direct services for students in the form of teachers and education workers. There are other things as well, but I'm not sure what.
Yeah, thank you so much for that. That is helpful. And a further piece of information that I'm just seeking is around the concerns that Deepak has outlined about the operating fund. Specifically, I know it's a bit about the budget process, but about the updates that we could be receiving on the operating fund that includes details upcoming at the Finance Committee, etc.
Just the lack of information, the formatting? So basically, we're not able to understand what the inclusive education budget is this year because it's not laid out the way that it is in the actual bylaw budget and the amended budget. So we just, we aren't able to determine what the allocations are. But what we can see and what we have real concerns about are the inaccurate projected enrollments for all level one, two, and three, but especially level two because those students bring in the highest number of grants. They're, there's the, they are the highest numbers and they bring in the most grants. Last year, I think there was an increase of two hundred fifty students. This year, the projected enrollments, I think, are showing a hundred and forty-one. Forty-one of those in September, and a hundred of those have been deferred until February, when they will only bring in half the amount on those same grants. So we're really concerned that the amount that's going to come in is going to be significantly less than the amount that is needed to support those students in September.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other questions, we're going to move on. Thank you for sharing. Next, on, next to present, we have the Vancouver Association of Secondary School Administrators, Angie and Benita, I believe, yes? And we'll start the clock whenever you begin. Go ahead.
Thank you. On behalf of the Vancouver Association of Secondary School Administrators, we'd like to respond to the draft budget proposal. We recognize that drafting a budget to meet the diverse needs of our community is a challenging task. Balancing various priorities while ensuring that essential services and programs are adequately funded requires a lot of careful consideration and thoughtful planning. We appreciate that this budget reflects our shared values and goals and that this budget in particular prioritizes support for students, particularly in terms of inclusion at the school level. Investing in educational resources and building inclusive school communities is crucial for fostering an environment where every student can thrive. We understand that this budget proposal includes a shift in resources, which will be something different that we will see at the secondary schools. We'll see how that plays out. And we look forward to seeing how this budget will continue to support both the learning and social, emotional needs of our students at the school level.
Thank you. Trustees, are there any questions? I don't have any questions at the board table. Thank you for submitting also documentation for us to go over as well. And we'll move on to our next speaker. The Vancouver Elementary Principal and Vice Principal Association. And I believe, are you at the, oh, there you are. Thank you. Dana and Stephen, start whenever you're ready.
Good evening. We just have a short statement to make. Vefa acknowledges that the budget process is very difficult. We're trying to meet the needs of many. We're students and staff with limited funds. We recognize that the district continues to support their education plan twenty twenty-six, and that's their guiding star. We're happy that the district has heard messaging from many that inclusive education supports, especially direct support to students, are the most important item this year. And our members believe that a strong school-based administration for both elementary and secondary is an important part of this support for those students. And we look forward to seeing how the decisions in this year's budget will impact this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? Trustees, questions? Moving to the Vancouver Elementary and Adult Educators Society. And we have Marjorie and Vanessa.
I have a question to the chair.
Yes.
Given, I do have to say my introduction and.
We'll accommodate, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. Denise, Jacka, Skai, Jean, Tapi, Hanzu, Hari, Soinzin, Sai, Sozai, Gatan, Zetni, Sine, Jacka, Zetni, Wulat, Zetni, Subeb, Zetniyan, Wuraket, Zetni, No, Denise, Nemox, Tayu, Habiga, Dizd, Luxilio, Sinifiani. What I did was, I addressed everybody, said it was a beautiful day, that I said, how are you? My name is Gatan. A lot of people know me as Marjorie Dumont. And my mother is Jacka, Zetni, Wulat. Her English name is Sue Alfred. My late father, his name is Denise, Wuraket, and his name was Henry Alfred. My house chief is Chief Nemox, and his English name is John Ridstale. And I belong to the Tayu clan, which is Beaver clan. And my late father's clan is the Luxilio, which is a small frog of the Witzoden. And my roots also extend. And I just wanted to also acknowledge that I'm a visitor here on the shared, unceded, stolen lands of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Tsleil-Waututh. And I raise my hands in honor and respect to the ancestors that have been here since time immemorial. And one of the things that I really want to instill in a lot of people who are listening when we do the land acknowledgement, and this is a Witzoden teaching, and also my Gixen ancestors have taught me this, that I have to acknowledge that I am a visitor here. If there's no one else here to welcome us on, we have to do this part. And we don't just say, this is weird, this, you can hear me? Okay. You don't just say that you're on the territories of the Three Nations here. You have to instill some kind of a teaching of the people of this land. And I just wanted to share a little bit of teaching of the late Chief Dan George. And he is Tsleil-Waututh, and his grandson, Gabriel George, had shared this story of how they are referred to as the people of the sunset. And his grandfather, Chief Dan George, a lot of you probably know him, was an actor, was the leader, the great leader, known, well-known. He would often demonstrate that he was, I feel weird, my back is to you. He would also, he would demonstrate that when the sun is setting, he would, he would go and pray. He would pray to the Creator for yet another day on Mother Earth. He would pray that the, and thank, and give gratitude to the sun and to be in gratitude that the sun is warming the children. And so he would demonstrate this over and over. And so when we go down by the beach over here, a lot of people go to the West End and look at the sun and take pictures. And I always think of Chief Dan George saying this prayer and singing this prayer of gratitude of yet another day has been given to us to walk on Mother Earth. And we think of the children who are being warmed by the sun's energy and the blessing that it's giving us. We think of all of the blessings that the land is providing as well. And by the way, the West End, all those streets, they were the trail of the ancestors who were hunting. They were hunting beaver, elk, deer, all along there. Just think of that when you, when you go to the West End. And think about the St. Paul's. That's where Chief Dan George's families and Musqueam and Squamish, they, they were berry picking. They were berry picking in that spot. And I just wanted to share that with you because it's important to acknowledge this history because we've been taught to not acknowledge this. We have been erased and we need to continue to do this work. And thank you for listening to my story. I have, I wanted to teach also, maybe I'll just read it so I'm sticking to the script. I also wanted to share what leaders look like for the people here. And as you aware, as you are aware, the teaching population is predominantly made up of women. And this is like many of our First Nations communities, where women have historically held vital leadership roles. In numerous nations, women are recognized as central figures in governance, spiritual guidance, and preservation of tradition and culture. And they are often seen as protectors of sacred sites, guardians of water and land, and crucial agents of social cohesion. Their role in passing down knowledge and teachings to children reinforces their importance in sustaining culture, cultural identity, much like the women play in public education today. So women in leadership are vital and because they embody and uphold traditional values that prioritize collective wellbeing, knowledge sharing, and community advocacy. Unlike Western hierarchical, oh my gosh, models, Indigenous leadership is grounded in belief that power is shared equally, with leaders acting as supporters rather than self-promoters, guided by teachings of humility. Women and all of our leaders, the First Nations leaders, Inuit leaders, Métis leaders, often lead from the back, ensuring the voices of the community are heard and respected rather than seeking recognition for themselves. Their leadership covers a range of things, including medicine, storytelling, art, cultural preservation. And they often carry the emotional and social burden of their communities, driven by deep understanding of their people's needs. By nurturing inclusive, community-focused leadership, Indigenous women play a crucial role in healing, empowering, and sustaining their communities across generations. So I'm just going to stop there. We just, I wanted to share about the traditional canoe that the people of this land, the sea-bearing people, who teach us about pulling together. We all need to pull together on this journey. We have to work together. We have to listen. We have to speak with integrity. And all the teachings of that traditional canoe is, there's much more to it. So thank you for listening to the land acknowledgement and my protocol of introducing self.
Thank you. It's always beautiful to hear you speak. I appreciate it. And we'll start the time whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Chair. I am Vanessa Lefebvre. My pronouns are she/her. Currently a Vice President and Grievance Officer of Vancouver Elementary and Adult Educators Society. So we're grateful to have this time today to share with trustees. So we're grateful to have this time today to share with trustees and district staff the budget recommendations from our members who are working with students in elementary schools, district programs, and adult education. The opportunity to come together reflects a sacred teaching of respect, which guides us to honor the contributions of all, especially those who care for and nurture the next generation.
So much like the buffalo, which represents abundance and the interconnectedness of life, our schools, our communities, where every individual's role is vital. This budget will directly impact whether these communities, our students, teachers, support staff, and families can continue to thrive and grow together. These past few years have been really detrimental to school communities as we have seen a reduction in support staff and teaching staff. The biggest priority for our members is to increase staffing levels of those providing direct supports to students, not only teaching, but support staff. The district has reduced their non-enrolling resource teacher staffing levels by 50 FTE since 2021. That has a huge impact on schools' ability to meet the needs of their students. When student needs are met, there is a ripple effect through community as school grapples with finding supports that just aren't there. Sometimes the Band-Aid is to reallocate the support from one, from another student, which then leaves that the student's needs not being met, and the cycle continues. This leads to worker burnout and medical leaves, workplace injuries, decrease in student attendance at school, workers reassigning, among other issues plaguing our district.
We appreciate that there are recommendations in this budget to reallocate funding to increase school-based staffing and direct supports to students. That's a priority that we've been pushing for a while, and it's good to see that in this budget. And we hope you, as trustees, keep this at the forefront while making decisions about how funding would be allocated in the budget.
A perennial request from our members is for the district to replace resource teachers from day one of their absence. This allows for supports for students to continue when a worker is away. When you have a school or site that is fully staffed, where students are provided with the supports they need, the overall impact on the school community and the district is tremendous. We encourage trustees to consider how the decisions being made will impact services provided to students.
With the increased closures of district programs, which provide some specialized programming for students with complex learning profiles, we are concerned that the increased closure of these programs is not for pedagogically sound reasons, but to balance a budget because these classes do require staffing well above the minimum requirements. These closures are not coming with consultation, transition plans, or adequate supports for those students in their neighborhood school. It is impacting students' access to public education, and that is a concern for the union. We are in support of inclusion, and we are in support of access to neighborhood schools. And as teachers, we also understand that every student's path is unique, and we need to provide the opportunities for our students to succeed. And sometimes that path is a district program, many of which are housed at school sites and are an important part of their school community.
In your draft budget document, there is a recommendation to lower the teaching teacher-on-call budget. This is in direct opposition of the recommendation from our members, which is to increase the on-call budget to ensure that any absences get filled to prevent loss of services to students. While staff's idea of reintroducing the attendance management system as a way to ensure workers will take fewer sick days, our members disagree wholeheartedly. Workers' access to sick days is a right under their collective agreements. When a school is staff appropriately to meet the needs of students, and there is coverage when a worker needs to take a sick day, that has a positive impact on workers' wellness.
A piece missing in this document is an allocation for adult education facilities. Adult Ed is a small but mighty division that keeps growing due to ongoing demand from students who are not able to be successful in the current secondary school system, students who require flexibility in their schedules as they have to work to help support their families, parents of our students who need to upgrade to access better employment, and adult students new to our country looking for language classes. We have been requesting that funding be allocated so that there can be facility upgrades and consideration for new adult ed spaces in our district to reduce waitlists with the increased demand for these courses.
If we look to implement the VSB's education plan through this budget, we need to ensure that as much funding as possible is allocated to school-based staffing and direct supports to students, ensuring equitable access to public education. More transparency on how funding is allocated in our district, as well as accountability for those district decisions. Those decisions need to align with the district's commitment to reconciliation, anti-oppression, and soji inclusion policies if we are committed to equity in our district. In doing so, we can also reflect on the sacred teaching of the Sabey, which represent honesty, encouraging us to lead with transparency and integrity, to be true to who we are, and to ensure our actions and decisions align with values we teach our students. Improving working conditions for workers improves learning conditions for students, improves worker retention and morale. We urge the board to show courage, represented by the bear, in making bold, equity-focused choices, and humility, represented by the wolf, by centering voices often left out of the process. If trustees would like any further information as they deliberate on how to allocate funding, we invite you to reach out to us for further consultation. Nohne, Kehfia, thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Gedan and Vanessa, for that. Are there any questions from trustees? Trustee Ready.
Thank you so much for your presentation and for taking the time to give such a thoughtful and robust presentation here, and also in writing. I do have a couple of questions. So just coming back to the resource teacher reduction of 50 FTE since 2021, can you say more about the overall reduction and the request for the replacement of day one, and what that actually looks like for a student in terms of the kind of lost support?
Yeah, definitely. So when we look at the data that's being, that's been provided to us, we know that in 2020, 2021, and in comparison to the data that was provided this year, there was a reduction in 50 FTE in the resource bucket. And so that is for district resource teachers, school-based resource teachers. ELL is in there as well, and it's all in one bucket that you can do that accounting. And so what we do know is that over the last, since that, during that time, we have seen a lot of failures to fill. And so on top of that reduction in FTE of the resource staff, which is a loss of service to students, is that the resource teachers have been pulled out of their resource position and to go cover a classroom because there needs to be a teacher in front of that classroom. And what happens then is that the resource teacher and the students that the resource teacher was supporting don't get that service that day. And so for many resource teachers, that was happening multiple times a week. And so those students were not getting those supports. And I would say in terms of being replaced by the, on the first day, that would mean that we would have a TTOC in there on the first day that a resource teacher is ill or absent, and they would be able to provide those supports to students. And so by seeing this not happen until the third day, then we are definitely having two days of no supports. And then depending on if there's a failure to fill or not, then that could keep going down the road.
Thank you. We're gonna move now to the Vancouver Secondary Teachers Association. We'll ask Carmen and Carl, take it away.
Good evening. My name is Carmen Shadley. Joining me is Carl Janzi. On behalf of the VSTA, we would like to thank trustees, senior management, and all staff involved for this opportunity to provide input into the final decisions which will determine next year's budget. Next slide, please. We have three specific requests for funding, which in our view could be responsibly allocated, given the district's budgeted financial position. We are requesting that inclusive education be funded at secondary with increased FTE for resource teachers and school psychologists, and an increase in program support funds. Next slide, please.
We recently surveyed our members. That's a new survey for this year. From our members of about 1,400, we received almost 300 completed responses. Relevant to budget development is that an overwhelming majority of teachers reported feeling that the needs of students with disabilities or diverse learning needs were not being met this school year. Specifically, 20% reported that those needs weren't being met at all. Next slide, please.
The draft financial plan refers to the reallocation of positions from district to schools and classrooms. However, this reallocation intends to support inclusive education at the elementary level, from what we can read, but with no specific plan for secondary. For inclusive education to work, it must be sufficiently funded at secondary schools.
Next slide, please. Adequately providing the supports for our diverse learners and at-risk students required that the greatest, is the second-greatest concern for secondary teachers. The VSB promotes an inclusive education system. Page 25 of the draft financial plan speaks more fully to this. And as pointed out on page 33, the district may combine teacher categories of learning assistants, special ed, and English language learners. Secondary schools traditionally receive only 18% of this staffing. So we are proposing that the district set aside $2.7 million to fund eight blocks of resource time at each of the, well, in total, across all 18 secondary schools. Next slide, please.
School, the work of school psychologists is essential to inclusive education because they provide the assessments for evidence-based interventions. Currently, the FTE for school psychologists remain significantly below what is required. Long waitlists for psychoeducational assessments persist in many VSB schools. Delays in these assessment services often lead to missed opportunities for intervention and support, which can have lifelong consequences for students' learning and social, emotional wellbeing. We propose that the district set aside $270,000 to increase the FTE for the coming school year. While these positions have been hard to fill in the past, we understand that there are interns currently working with VSB school psychologists. This increase in FTE is necessary to continue to address the ongoing waitlists for assessments. Next slide, please.
School budgets. I'm gonna speed this up. The VSB produces a budget manual that provides guidance on schools' final budget allocation for programs and categories. It's referenced on page 11 of the draft financial plan in a, in a very small way, but fundamentally, at secondary, schools get $45 per student registered at the school. Next slide, please. Other allocations include furniture and equipment, library support, and some students with designations for certain disabilities or diverse learnings. There's an error on this slide. It says 9,835. The actual budget for these items allocated to schools is $1,425,463. That goes to schools, looking at, from the budget manual. Next slide, please. Program support funds, on the other hand, are the flex funds that teachers actually get to use in their classrooms to support field trips and resources necessary. As you can see, that the funding is in different categories of students based on course. The total funding to flex programs for all 18 secondary schools last year, this year, we're in $900,000 roughly. Next slide, please. The program support budget manual from 2013 actually was considerably more allocated to school budgets. It's a reduction, you'll see, from the 1314 to the 2425, of 20% for basic, which doesn't show in, yes, it does, and 16% for the per-student funding for each of the different courses. Next slide, please. So we propose that the funding be increased by $600,000 to restore funding to the 1314 levels to make up for the actual cost of materials due to inflation. Next slide, please.
In summary, we propose that approximately $3 million be reallocated to support inclusive education in secondary, and $600,000 to provide supplies for classrooms. Thank you for your time and considering our requests.
Thank you. Trustees? Trustee Richardson.
Thank you so much for the presentation. There's probably lots of questions that we can ask, but I like to own in on the school psychologist. $270,000 asked, is the request to increase by two FTEs, is that going to be adequate to reduce or eliminate the waitlist? And these are students who have not been caught up with the grade seven attempt to have everyone tested who should be tested by the time they transition to secondary school. Is this too adequate to do it? And are those psychologists available, should we have the money?
So it's a start. It's a start. It won't eliminate all waitlists, but it's a start. And the reason we said two was because we wanted a realistic ask, and we know that there are two interns currently working. And of course, there is a post-and-fill process, but we do know that there are people available to be hired if we had two more FTE to hire them. It's not enough, but it is a start.
Trustee Friedko.
Do you know how much is a waitlist for the school psychologist?
Yes, thank you for the question. I, we based our ask fundamentally on the budget manual, which says that the general teacher salary is around $131,000. We just pegged it the same, assuming that these school psychologists would actually be higher than that. We don't know the actual wage directly. Oh, the waitlist, sorry.
How long is the waitlist? I don't have that exact information, but it, I think there are people here who might have more precise, but I can get that to you. I can't tell you exactly right now, but it can be over a year or more. I'm looking at colleagues. Yeah, it can be, yeah, more than that. And really, for these students, you know, every day, every week, every month, that they don't have these evidence-based interventions is critical because this is, these are critical times for them.
Trustee Ready.
Thank you, and thanks so much for your presentation and for outlining some very specific requests. I do have two questions. One is related to the school psychologist as well. And it's been a while since I've worked in the secondary system, but I recall some of the delays that you're speaking of on student assessment related to funding and kind of support that can be drawn in based on that. If you could share, what does that look like at the secondary level? Like, what kinds of support would be delayed for a student who's waiting on the list for the psychologist's assessment? Like, as if they didn't get that, what would they be missing?
Well, the thinking, so if a student arrives in grade eight without having a psych wed assessment, then fundamentally, they are in regular classes with support only as developed through requests through school-based team, which, given the change in the model I'm used to, would be the skill center model, but that doesn't really exist anymore than I'm aware of, or it does in an entirely different form. So I wouldn't be able to say what the reference would be, but traditionally, it would have been that a student, even without the special ed designation, would have been able to be referred to supports at skills. And through the counseling department, there could be an ask for extra supports for classrooms, help, and things like that. But, you know, currently with, I'm really, really unsure of what the model looks like right now as far as students arriving. My general understanding from secondary, the big push was to ensure that students were there done right in grade eight as fast as possible, or in grade 12, so that they could access post-secondary supports if necessary. And that was my general experience with it at the secondary level. It was those two frames, you know, those were you in first, grade eight, grade 12, and then anybody else you could get to, which hopefully mentored by grade 12. So, thank you.
Trustee Friedko, and then back to trustee Ready.
Thank you, Chair. I have a question about the flex funds. I know many of these things, like books, the workbooks, even the field trips and stuff, or the dance, drama, music, composition. Like, some of this is actually funded by the parents as well. They pay for it. How did you come up with this number that the school needed this much to fund all these students?
So the VSB puts out a budget reference manual that's available within the VSB hub every year. And it's updated with the numbers for every single school. It lists every account and how much money is allocated to it, and it lists each of the different, each of the, we also get a document of how many kids are registered in each of the courses that qualify for the funding. And then that comes to the school, and those are to support every type of consumable- And those are to support every type of consumable that could possibly be used in the school in a given year. So I took the number just by simply adding up the accounts for each of the 18 high schools. That's how I arrived at that. We have a copy of the 2013-2014 manual, which also lists the same exact information. There's one for every year. That was the one I had. And the, the difference was a drop sometime around 2016 or 2017 to the levels that we're at right now, which was an across-the-board drop. It wasn't just a shift. And what we see then is, had the money stayed the same and kept pace with inflation, using the CPI calculator from the Bank of Canada, I plugged the numbers in and came out with the $600,000.
You, trustee ready?
Thanks, yeah. I just wanted to continue on the school psychologist question, just to make sure I understand. So that piece around transitioning from grade, from grade seven into grade eight at high school has some impacts. Could you say anything about, like, a student turning 19 and going into adult ed? And if they still haven't had the assessment, what would be the impacts there?
If you don't receive an assessment before you turn 19, you have to pay for it yourself. And it's depending on the type of assessment you're looking for, particularly, specifically, if you're looking for the autism diagnosis, it won't happen. Speaking from personal experience with difficulty in trying to get a child designated either in high school, sorry, at 18 versus at 12, do it at 12, please, as fast as possible. The, if though, on the other hand, you are, you do receive that designation, then it's a simple form that you apply to, you fill out from the federal government, that then impacts on your ability to access, your family can access supports that way, and you have access to the most post-secondary schools' inclusive ed services. And if you don't get that by 19, it is exceedingly difficult to track that down. It is, like I said, it is a per-family cost. You must pay for it then yourself.
Thanks. Trustee Ma?
I don't know whether you'll allow this question, but it's related to the teacher psychologists. And we, I'd like to ask the same question to the elementary union. Is that possible?
Go ahead, yeah.
Okay. So we talk about the two needed there. What about for elementary children?
So the teacher psychologist in the elementary is also, we, we really need the assessments done. Our waitlists are probably the same or maybe even longer, where the students really need that assessment to get the services that they need.
And there is also a lot of delays. So our students that, that are needing assessments in kindergarten to grade three, a lot of times that is pushed and the priority is made for students starting in grade four, so that they have an assessment in place by, by the time they get to secondary school. So we are seeing that as an issue as well. Thank you.
Trustee Ma?
So a question to either. So I guess assessment means designation, and then designation means additional services. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions. Is that fair to say? Trustee Friedko?
Would you be able to vote secondary and elementary, like, by email? If you can send us, how long is the waitlist right now? If you can send that to us, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, seeing there are no other questions, we'll move a motion to rise from committee. Trustee Ma, thank you for making the motion that the board rise from the committee of the whole and reconvene the board meeting. Seconded by trustee Friedko. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous, thank you. Okay, as there are no objections, okay, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much for everyone who's come out tonight and to share all of your input for the budget. We'll adjourn at 6:16. Thank you.